Presteased order on Wednesday, July 25th at 9:00 AM for the purpose of a work session. I'll call the roll. Augustine?
Here.
Nashroll?
Here.
Sweattick here. All right, let's have at it.
Let's have at it. I have a couple of things. First thing is that we have a cemetery grant opportunity that I would love to go ahead and move forward with. In speaking with, bear with me, I'm adjusting the screen. In speaking with Suzanne and our service department last Friday, this has been something I've been talking about for some time, and I apologize, I only have one rendering here. If you look at Maple Hill, this is the entryway, and it gets very congested there. So when we have people coming in and going out, they have to pull onto the grass. It's regularly happening, and I think we risk the grass being torn up, which I know it's being torn up. We risk people getting stuck in the grass. And then this corner here is very, very tricky for the Hearst and for our service department to manipulate. So we talked about extending this six feet over into the grass and just doing, the service department would do all of the labor, they would dig down. Do you want to speak to this, Kenny?
You'd have to use a microphone, bud. You would have had one in front of you.
I know. The way we were talking, probably do like eight inch depth, six foot wide, a length of 196 foot. So if you have a map, basically where you round out going from the turnaround out towards the road, it'd go straight from there, 196 foot with a 17-foot radius. So it gets you about eight, eight more vehicles. That's a 25 foot per vehicle, just being generous there.
Yes, so it's been like a really congested area. Those guys put a lot of work and time into giving us a cost estimate. Because we would be doing it in-house, the labor would be roughly $1,000, and the textile fabric that would go down underneath our grindings that we already have is $355. So I'd like to pursue the grant for this, but the problem that we run into as a cemetery is that this is an entire row of lots or plots. What we could do in talking further with the service department, our concern is that these plots actually go straight to the road. So if they were to fill up, which they haven't at this juncture, the headstones would be right at the road. So we're saying if we could extend this about six feet, we could potentially make these cremation burials right through here. So we would still have the opportunity to sell them, but we wouldn't be able to do a traditional burial.
Why couldn't the headstones be on the opposite end?
They just don't.
Is there anything that prevents that? You could definitely do it.
But then we still risk digging that close to the road.
Can I see this color?
Yep.
So how many lots are available still?
So there is approximately 300 traditional lots in Maple Hill and 80 cremation lots, approximately.
Available?
Available.
And on this row, some of these are designated that we're not to sell them anyway because of, there's a section here where there's a drainage pipe at the end of the road, and then here by the tree where we're talking about turning it, those are do-not-sell lots because the tree's there. And so we would be eliminating 54 traditional lots, but potentially creating 54 cremation.
And you're talking about widening it here?
Yeah, six feet.
So you want to take away approximately 20% of the available lots that are remaining to do traditional lots?
Correct. I wouldn't say 20%, I mean, it's only, what is that number?
Approximately 300 traditional.
So the headstones would be right up here, you're saying?
And we run into that problem. What's the one up here on State or on Ridge, 303?
Ridge.
Yeah, it's on, so if you ever drive in there, it's an absolutely beautiful cemetery, but the headstones are right by the road and they're leaning in, I mean, they're at risk.
Well, not to say tomato, tomato, but I mean, it's more, it's like a driveway than a road, right? So I mean, it's not like people are going fast past these headstones, but if the headstones are right up on there.
But if you've got a Hearst coming through and it's a bigger vehicle and it was right up on there, it would be difficult for them to maneuver, I think.
How much wider are you looking at?
No, that's what I'm saying. No, I'm talking about if we widen it, because I think that's a good idea.
What's your current width?
10 foot of the driveway, I think it was nine or 10 foot. And then another six foot would give you the ability to get, to just get around. Instead of going 20 foot and having a full road down there, there would just be a little extension of the driveway.
So what's total cost on it?
So as I said, the labor is roughly $1,000, and then the cost of the fabric is $355 because we have the grindings, those are free, and all of our, the grant is for $2,500. So the total cost is roughly $1,400.
In totality?
Yes, if we do it in-house with our service department.
I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good idea. I've been up there and I know how narrow that is. So, and to my point, what I was saying is if you widen it and the headstones are kind of right up on that driveway, it is a driveway, so people are going slow. So I would think, I would think that would not be a big issue.
Yeah, I think the issue, when I'm speaking about the headstones now, is that they would be right against this current drive if we were to maintain.
That's why you have to eliminate those.
Oh.
But if we were to eliminate those plots to put in the drive, that wouldn't be the issue anymore. It would allow for us to have more ability for vehicles to come in and out. I mean, I've been there several, several times, and everybody just parks here.
No possibility of going to the other side?
Now that boundary line is.
Proper, the line's right there, and I don't know.
Do you see the red line there?
And how many, how many lots are available in the township period? Best guess?
Total?
Seven, seven hundred.
The other two cemeteries. So you're talking probably about 750 total. Approximately.
Thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate your work.
And if we do create that road to be just a cremation lot, road, then we would have to, I don't know if we have to make any kind of modification to our happy, we would sell those lots at cremation rate. And how other rules or processes?
So did somebody do the engineering on this? It's just going to be basically an asphalt overlay?
Yeah, we were going to use, utilize the grindings that we have. If you wanted to put premium in there, I mean, there's a price to that if you put 304, but using the material, getting that roll of cloth, yeah, I think eight inches.
So it's going to be a gravel roadway?
It's going to be grinding finished at the first point until you refinish that whole driveway. Whenever you decide to, whatever, chip seal it or hot mix it and redo it.
And that was the intent, was that at some point, when that road is redone, you could just, they could just pave this section too, or do whatever is done to your point. It could be chip sealing or whatever, and then it would be continuous.
Did Mike weigh in on this?
He was not here.
He's not here?
Mike and I have had conversation about this before.
Just don't want to turn into a maintenance headache for us.
Yeah.
Any concerns about that?
For the most part, once you, I mean, once the drivers are established, there's not a whole lot of traffic on them. So in the winter, we do one round anyways, and we don't always have to go in there and plow off. So besides price of covering it, so a hot mix or a chip seal, obviously, there's going to be more price to that when that time comes because you're covering more of an area.
Right.
But maintenance-wise, besides that, after the project's done, I don't think we'll have to do anything with it. Most people probably just running up that main section, going straight in anyways, utilizing that instead of the new addition. Besides for funerals.
Maintenance now for, you know, the people that are parking in the grass and tearing that up.
Yeah, I mean, we go in there and reseed and put topsoil in occasionally.
Yeah.
Now.
I'll just, the whole file with you if you want. I apologize, I just have one.
And you said, Suzanne, you said there were about 300 traditional lots left. And how many in total in that, I mean, used and unused in that cemetery?
I, it's on the website. There's maps and there's layout of what's left to the best. No, there isn't. What we put maps on, but there's also a breakdown of how many plots are left, an approximate number, but.
So if you were to try to widen any of this at any point, you're going to lose some lots, correct?
Correct, yeah. The headstones, currently, the headstones would be on that current entrance, right on the edge. Because it's about eight foot, eight by three foot per plot, well, four foot.
Well, I'm talking about if you were to widen this instead.
Oh, the back drive?
Then an encroachment on the lots as well as?
I think it would be as well. We, I, we didn't look because the talk was just to do something upfront.
Because I'm looking at these here, and it looks like, are these cremation lots, these smaller squares? Down in the back portion?
No, those are the same. So the ones on the northwest, on the driveway side, those were established with no space in between the plots, and those are an 11-foot width plot divided by three. And then the lots on the south side of the cemetery are all, they were surveyed differently than the ones up front. But it's, that map isn't, isn't to a precise scale. They're the same size. They allow for a traditional burial. Two areas were designed differently.
Well, the only thing I'm looking at is if you were to, this is the driver's, the street here, if you were to widen this with that encroachment of lots and make this your bypass area, and they just have this like the entrance and exit drive, you know what I mean?
Well, the main factor is that turning radius. So when you're turning back onto the main drive and you're making the right-hand turn, there's a walnut tree straight ahead, and there's another tree on the corner. The Hearst cannot physically get through, they're struggling, they've been struggling. The walnut tree is beautiful and a great location right on the boundary line where the other tree on the corner could easily.
Over here?
Yeah. The, there's a little baby runt tree that's not growing very well on the.
That chainsaw?
Right-hand corner, and it would have to come down to extend this, but it would allow for, for the service department and Hearst and these vehicles to be able to make that turn.
Well, you could still do the radius there, but I would prefer not to lose lots. You know, that's what I'm saying. There is a limited, finite amount. You know, if you could make this your double without losing a lot.
I think you would still lose lots there. Wherever you go, you're going to lose lots.
Well, I don't know, that's why I wasn't answering the question. This is, she said this is not to scale.
So the radius turn is an issue. Once cars come into the drive, if it's a very large.
Thank you.
Procession, we have to be very strategic where we let people park in that part because we need to make sure that when someone turns out to leave, that there's a space in between that radius.
Right.
We don't have earmarked the three lots next to that tree because of the tree that's right at that corner. We could extend that corner and take out the curb and move it. Today, that tree is not posing an issue with its trunk base, but in a hundred years, it will be.
Won't be my problem then. Maybe.
So that, that corner could, could be expanded. I believe that the current row, there's four feet in between. There's a row in between.
Yes, four foot.
From the other. I don't know if we reverse the headstones to be on the east side, would allow enough room in between the road adjacent to it to allow for the equipment to get in between, that would have to be measured.
Well, the equipment would access it from the road at that point. You wouldn't have to.
We just run at the risk of an egress issue here where people are parked on that main road with a larger processional, and they can't get out. The other variable is, you know, I've.
Does, if you designated it as no parking, does procession wrap all right or use all the available space? Is that what the issue is?
Some that do use all of the available space.
There has been, you know, a time where there was, but then they just hurt at 303.
That's the problem. The other thing is I've seen, you know, one car come in and park right on the road to go visit, and then they block it for everybody else. No one else can get through.
And if you guys do this project, what time would that take?
If you say 20?
I figured 12 hours, but that's three of us. So 36 hours of labor was factored in there. And I don't know what Mike uses for his program to figure out that labor rate. I just did a generic calculation. I figured two days, six hours a day for the reason of getting pulled away to do a tree or.
Right.
Whatever else, daily, daily business that you can't account for.
And the grant reporting doesn't have to be done right away. So we have until next year about this time to finalize the project before the recording would be due. So there, you know, it would be at their convenience as, as far as time.
So the urgency here is the grant application?
I wouldn't say there's urgency, I just, this is something that's been ongoing.
Okay, when is Mike back?
But by the.
Way in on it, yeah.
The grant application is due the 31st.
Okay.
There was some discussion at length about whether or not this was our year to file this. It's an every-other-year kind of a thing. And so we just finished reporting last year, and in my mind, we had done it last year, and actually, this is our year to go ahead and move forward.
Yeah, my main, main concern is giving up that quantity of available lots.
Yeah, I, I like the idea. I think it's a good idea. I think in the long run, it saves a lot of maintenance and a lot of work for us, for the township. So I like the idea, but I agree with giving up the lots. We have a finite number of lots. And I mean, last year, we sat here for, you know, almost an hour, having to tell someone we're sorry, but they could not get a lot for their, their deceased daughter because.
But that was because they weren't a resident.
It's because they were not a resident, but we went through those, through that process because we do have a finite number. If we did not have a finite number, then we wouldn't have needed that meeting. It would have been, anybody can have it, so.
And our organizational meeting minutes, that they have to be a resident.
It, it is. It is, but the reason that we have it there is because there is a finite number of lots. That's why we, why we had to add that into the organizational meeting. So that's my point, is that there's only a certain number that we have, you know, technically forever.
So maybe have a consideration then of just doing half of the project instead of the full project. I mean, I just, there's got to be some type of a way that we can get these cars off of 303, which is a hazard and a liability for our residents that are coming in and their guests. Thank you. I appreciate your help, Kenny, and thank you, Suzanne. I appreciate your help on that.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, very much.
A couple other things that I had, we have the hearing that we, we did our resolution for 25 River Road. Suzanne has asked me to publicly state, because it's not in the resolution, that that hearing time on August 22nd would be 6:30 PM, should the resident wish to move forward with a hearing. Also wanted to thank the Greensmith for the donation of the two dogwoods that we will be planting in honor of trustees Schulte and trustee Rhodes. And there was an advertisement that went out yesterday about the movie night, and I just thought we had left it, that we were going to have further discussion about the fire association supporting that. I noticed that it is being supported by resident Cindy Eggleman, and I thought we were going to come back and have further discussion on that. But it was already promoted yesterday.
Yeah, with the Greensmith, that's what I had emailed everyone, saying that I wanted to thank them. But also, you know, we, I think we were all copied on communications from 350 Hinckley about potential maybe doing something different. So I have been working with John also. I did, I reached out to John after that last meeting, and that is when he said, no problem with the dogwoods, and the Greensmith would be donating the dogwoods as well as planting them. But is, do we want to have further conversation with possibly a different tree? Well, the flowering dogwood is native to Ohio. It's not necessarily the best tree to have out in the sun like that. There were other options that we had, so maybe that's something that we want to discuss at our next meeting or, you know, even two meetings from now because John said that's not something he would plant until the fall anyways. So there's no real urgency with getting it.
I thought that that was one of the trees that John recommended to you.
That was one of the trees that was a native tree to Ohio, yes.
Okay.
But John did not know, and we haven't even discussed where exactly they're going to be, I know, along the.
I actually, I kill everything I plant, okay? So I actually asked Richard to provide us some input because I, I would say, I would call him basically an expert on landscaping as relative to what does best in this environment and what's least maintenance issue for us, those kinds of things. So he did provide some feedback on that. I think we all received that, and I greatly appreciate that. Thank you, Richard.
Okay, so we're going to not move forward with the dogwoods, we're going to go a different direction or have further conversation?
Further conversation.
We're going to get two trees.
Okay. Okay, I thought we decided at the last meeting to do the dogwoods.
Well, I think that we did decide at the last meeting to do the dogwood, but I think we received additional information since the meeting saying, maybe we should rethink this. And again, there's no urgency with this because it's going to be in the fall. So we have time to really make sure that, you know, the last thing we want to do is plant two trees, and then they die in, in the first year. So I think that if we want to have further conversation about it, I would be very supportive of that.
Okay.
What were the other trees that were recommended, if I may ask?
They were, I was looking at my notes, and I owe you a response email also. The four magnolia trees, one is the cucumber, the umbrella, the tulip, and the big leaf trees. His first recommendation that I think he thought would do very well in that location was the eastern red bud.
And is there confusion on the location?
Well, we said it was going to be the border of the property, correct?
Correct.
Down the property line, but it's a long route. Is it going to be, you know, the south end of the property where there is more trees and there is shaded? Or is it going to be at the north end of the property where there's really nothing right now?
So I would say the first thing would be identify where you want to put them.
Well, when we were talking with the garden club and having these types of conversations, it was on the southern portion.
The southern portion is.
It's closer to the parking lot.
So five wrongers park over there?
No, Hinckley Historic.
It's over here.
Society. Along, no, you're fine, along the property line, and so it'll be on the southern section to kind of delineate on that, near that boundary line between the two properties.
And I would say if we want to work with the garden club or the Greensmith to create a plan, I think 350 Hinckley had suggested that kind of creating the plan because these are two trees we're talking about planting for two deceased trustees. But I would imagine that will continue to grow, that we will want to plant additional shrubs or trees to honor. So if there is some kind of a blueprint or a plan moving forward so that it doesn't just look like hodgepodge, it's something that in the end will look very nice. I think that's something that we should discuss as well.
Okay, so I have no problem with that whatsoever. I do know that this, the reason we were going to plant in this specific area was because I came to this board. We have had several requests for trees being planted and honored of loved ones in Veterans Memorial Park, and we designate that park specifically for veterans. And so I had asked this board if we were in agreement to go ahead and utilize that property line at the historical society. We all were in agreement, and certainly we can suggest trees. But I think one of the things that I think is very poignant to a person who's planting a tree in someone's honor is to be able to choose the tree with which they're planting. So just FYI.
Like options?
Well, that's what I said, we can suggest certainly. And go from there.
Well, that's not necessarily just, you know, a cut-and-dry answer because planting in memory of someone, we were talking about the township was going to purchase the trees. So it's not that someone was going to be purchasing these trees and planting the trees in memory of their loved one. The township was going to be purchasing these trees. I support what was suggested to us, and Jack brought up at the last meeting, was creating a, a policy of.
Native.
Of native species that can be planted there. So that would be, again, my suggestion.
Yeah, I just think we're talking about two different things. I'm just saying that the initial conversation was to allow people to plant there in memory of loved ones. And then I came to the board and asked if we could go ahead and move forward with two in memory of former trustees. So obviously, the township will be purchasing the two for the trustees, but now they're being donated regardless. We, you know, I want to do it properly. I want the trees to survive and live long, healthy, happy lives. And I have no problem with working collectively to do that. Okay, so the movie night was advertised yesterday on August, I believe it's 19th. I have a wedding, so I won't be able to attend. It's being sponsored by the Police and Fire Association, and it's that resident Cindy Eggleman. Now, I know that the resident Cindy Eggleman stood up at the last trustee meeting and asked if she could be a part of sponsoring the event. I thought we were going to come back and have further conversation about that, and then I saw it advertised yesterday.
Chief Senator reached out to me yesterday about that. We had left it at the last meeting that we thanked Cindy Eggleman for her offer, but you had said that you wanted to offer it to the buyers. Cindy Engelmann for her offer, but you had said that you wanted to offer it to the fire association first before we accepted that.
Correct.
So I did speak with Chief Grossenbach, who spoke with the president of the association, and they thought it was nice to give a resident an option to sponsor the movie. So they decided that they would be donating refreshments, the fire association. So that was, I told Chief Sentner that he could go ahead and create the event on Facebook, because that is what we had agreed to.
Okay, I don't believe that we agreed to that. I think that we were going to come back and have further conversation. And I think that this is a very slippery slope, because.
I thought it was, we, we said we would give the fire association the opportunity, and then if he didn't, she would be welcome to do so.
That's not how I understood it. I understood that we were going to come back and have further conversation. Ms. Engelmann has stood at our podium twice and announced that she's running for trustee. She submitted her petition, which doesn't make her a resident anymore. It makes her a candidate. Does the township want to get into the business of politics? It's called Hinckley Township Movie Night. This is not a traditional way that the township, a government agency, has moved forward on anything political.
I don't think she is sponsoring it as a trustee candidate. It is sponsored, from what I saw and what I understood, it was sponsored by Cindy Engelmann.
I understand that it says resident, but she is a candidate once her petition is filed, according to the state.
Okay, well, I.
Secretary.
She's still a resident at the end of the day, and Medina County Fair every year. I, every elected official in the county is in there donating time, money. And they're as.
Elected officials.
Candidates, everything.
And how do they do that?
How do they do that?
Yes.
What do you mean?
They announce that they're doing it as a resident or candidate?
Half the time they don't announce it, period.
Okay. We have a situation where we have a candidate sponsoring a movie night as a quote unquote resident. If you open this can of worms, it's a very slippery slope. It's setting precedent for future candidates to come in and do the same. This is not a traditional way that Hinckley Township, a government agency, has done things.
I think that she is sponsoring it. It is very clearly stated that she is sponsoring it as a resident. She's in the audience today. Will you be doing any campaigning at this event?
Just the fact that her name is attached to it. With your name attached to it as a candidate.
And it says resident Cindy Engelmann.
Will there be any campaign material?
No, there will not.
Okay. The name itself is it. The secretary of state delineates what candidate versus a resident quite clearly. I don't, I don't agree with it. I don't think that our government here in Hinckley Township should be supporting a candidate who needs name recognition, and that's what this looks like.
Well, that is something I wish you would have said at the last meeting. Well, the, the last meeting, you said, at the last meeting, you said you wanted to give the fire association the opportunity to host before we accepted Cindy's offer. I spoke with Chief Grossenbach the very next day, who then spoke with Lee Brass, the president of the Fireman's Association. He sent an email to me saying that the, the fire association thought it was nice to involve residents in sponsoring this movie night. Perhaps the next movie night next year, another resident would want to sponsor. I thought that that was a great idea, so that it drives community involvement. They will be providing the refreshments.
I don't remember exactly what I said at the last meeting. My understanding was that we were going to come back and have further discussion, which is why I have educated myself between now and then.
Okay, you say that there's law that says that she can't?
I didn't say that there's law. I said that the secretary of state, now that she has filed her petition, she is a candidate. I didn't say that there's law.
As opposed to?
She is a candidate for the, for a position as a trustee.
Yeah, once you file, yes.
She's filed. She's a candidate.
But, but.
I don't.
Are you, and you're saying that she can't then support anything?
I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that there's a way to go about it, and that's between her and her campaign. And I'm saying that I, as a township trustee representing our municipality, do not agree that our township should be, be any part of anyone else's campaign. There's a separation between a campaign and a municipality.
Well, technically, the township isn't doing this. The police association and the fire association is doing this.
Called Hinckley Township Movie Night. And we are having discussion, and we've had discussion as trustees, so it is a township.
I, I do not, I do not know what it's called. I did not memorize what, uh, what it said. But this was, in fact, I believe Chief Sentner didn't even ask us about, and he let us know. He bought the, he bought the, um, the association purchased the equipment, and they would be hosting a movie night. So as we discussed several times, the associations are separate, and these are being put on by the associations.
I understand that they're being put on by the associations. We are having conversations as township trustees about the movie night we did last year, and we're doing it this year. It's part of our township. We're doing it as a community event, all collectively. As township trustees, we were all there at the last one. We are, we are working as a township to host the community event. It's called Hinckley Township Movie Night. The trustees are directly involved by having conversations like the one we're having right now.
It's actually after the last one, you were not for the township even paying for the movie rights. That is how the associations got involved with it, if I am remembering this correctly. You did not want to have the township pay for the licensing fee or the rental of the equipment. That is how the associations got involved with it. So I presented this at, to the township to host, and it was not supported. So that is when the association stepped up and the associations got involved with it, and they've kind of taken it over.
I, I don't need to reiterate that we are talking about it as a township trustees at, right now, in a municipal position. We've talked about it at the last meeting, and we talked about it last year. That means we are integrated and a part of it. We're probably going to post it on our website. It's, it's a township event.
We talk about a lot of things.
Understood.
We talk about the Boy Scouts and the Boy Scouts garage sale. That is not something, that's the Hinckley Community Garage Sale. That Hinckley Township has nothing to do with. That's the Boy Scouts that put that on. So it's one in the same, in my opinion.
I don't agree with how it's being done. I think I wanted to make that quite clear. I think that we have a campaign happening amongst a community event, and I think there should be delineation. And I don't need to speak to it any further.
Okay, are we ready?
Move on.
Okay. Um, the only, I have two things that I wanted to discuss. The purpose for this meeting really was the trash survey that we can move on to. But the other thing, I just wanted to clarify with both of you to make sure that we are on the same page moving forward in terms of the liaison. There was an email sent out over the weekend with a resident who had a Kimball issue. It was sent to all three of us. Jack, you had responded, you know, right away and said Monique is the liaison, so she's going to handle this. And Melissa, you responded to it, and then you, you contacted or you had Lynn contact Kimball, and you responded to the resident while I was already, as the liaison, working on this in the background, already contacting my two contacts at Kimball. You had responded to the resident, um, saying what, what the problem was. And then yesterday I find out it's something different, so I just want to make sure to eliminate confusion and frustration that we are going by the liaisons. That, that was the purpose of having them, to not have too many cooks in the kitchen.
I think that's really interesting.
Create, create confusion.
Last January, when you guys started, you said that you wanted to work together.
Yes.
You said that the liaisons were just point, direct points of access and that we were going to work together. You are my fifth and sixth trustees. I have been a liaison for five years, and I have worked with all of the other trustees that I have worked with in this capacity. And it doesn't mean that just because you're the fire liaison or there's zoning liaison or whatever liaison, that, that you are the only one in charge. All three trustees are in charge of all departments, and we work collectively. The reason that I responded to this resident is because I've been responding to this resident since twenty twenty on this issue. It's been ongoing. It's someone that I've built a relationship with, and he knows and she knows that they can rely on me for a direct, quick, accessible response. So I did my due diligence and started working on it. We can work together. All of our employees are all of our employees. It's not that the service department is just the employees of Jack. It's not that the department, admin department is just the, you know, staff for you. We have to work together. That was exactly what we said last January. And there's been this delineation where we have these boundaries now, and it's never been this way in all the years that I worked in the township. And I can't tell you how many times I would see an email from another trustee and say, oh, thank goodness they dealt with that. That's great. I'm going to move on to the next thing.
I agree with you completely that we are here to serve all of our residents. However, this was something that the resident did not reach out to you. They reached out to all three trustees. Jack said Monique is the liaison. Monique will handle this.
I didn't.
I'm handling, you didn't see that?
I didn't see that email.
That was the very first response to the email.
I.
Regardless, regardless, had the resident reached out to you and you were working with it, I would say thank you so much for handling this. That it takes a load off for me. However, the email was sent to all three of us, and as the liaison, I was doing my due diligence and speaking with Kimball trying to get resolution. And now there's added frustration to it, because they've been told three different things, I think, at this point. Well, yesterday, Lynn, you had sent an email yesterday saying, you know, at this point, the resident's been told two different things. So, so that is where I am saying it created confusion. So yes, while we all work together, it's just to eliminate the confusion and the frustration. That was your point of why we needed to have the liaisons, is that it is a point of contact so that we can efficiently get resolutions to issues. That, that is all, that is all I am saying.
The confusion that happened was because of Kimball. It wasn't because of anything that you or I did. And, and that's just how, you know, we, we've been dealing with that for some time. You know, I, I was working on the trees for the trustees. And then all of a sudden you came to the table and said, I spoke to John, and these are the trees instead of this other crab apple tree. We work collectively. That's what we do.
Absolutely.
I have absolutely no problem working collectively.
I got involved with the trees because someone had reached out and asked about why the Greensmith was not being used. So I had reached out to the Greensmith and asked John, had anyone contacted him? And he said, no.
I had contacted Greensmith. I stated that publicly at the last meeting.
You stated it publicly. I'm telling you, I spoke with John. I, I can show you the text message. He said, no, he had not been contacted. And the reason that I was involved, that I involved myself in it is because we had already agreed to go with native Ohio species. And the selection that you and the garden club chose was not an Ohio native species.
It wasn't what I chose. It was, was what was recommended, and I had asked for a native species first.
Are we ready to move on to the Kimball survey?
I did attempt to get multiple quotes, because that's what the township does. We have a job to do our due diligence. We don't just go to one vendor. As much as I love the Greensmith, I went to several vendors. I spoke with Suzie at the Greensmith, and I mentioned that publicly. I did call John. He was, he said he would call me back, and I did not get a call back. We have a job here in Hinckley Township to get the best price we can, which is why we try to always get three quotes. I presented the township with two, because I couldn't get a third because of how unique the tree was.
In the interest of working together and moving forward, shall we begin with our Kimball trash survey?
Please do.
Okay. Um, who would like to start with some of the some of the questions?
I think one of the questions should be, have you ever opted out? I think that will be a good way to designate. Maybe there are people who don't try to opt out now, but they have in the past. It's just one of the questions that I came up with.
To give you both a little bit of backstory, I, I have been trying to start some digging, and Lynn helped me very much yesterday by reaching out to a couple of the different trash companies in the area that I am trying to get an approximate ballpark of what we would be looking at if the township were to contract with them. Obviously, nobody can give me a quote. This is going to have to go out to bed. But I'm trying to get an idea of what would the rates look like? In twenty twenty five, if we were to remain single hauler and allow for, I'm kind of thinking it's going to be a fifteen percent opt out, that we would have. Fifteen percent of the households would not need trash, because they own a business in Medina County, so they take their trash to their business. They take their trash to the dump. They are a business here that their home is on the same property as their business, and they already have commercial pickup. So I have not heard back from anyone yet. I've reached out to a couple. I've not heard back from anyone yet. But is that something that we want to have in here along the lines of? Do you support moving forward with a single hauler? Kind of like with a price not to exceed. You know, right now, Lynn, I know you're going to correct me on the exact dollar amounts, but right now it's seventy five and change, plus I know fuel surcharges and everything.
Yeah.
Seventy five and change for unlimited service with recycling and
Two trash bins.
For the two trash bins.
It's thirty three ten for the, just the bag service.
Plus the cost of the bags.
That's the cost of the.
A quarter.
Seven eighty three per month, I believe, for the service.
Okay.
With thirty three ten for, to purchase, because you have to purchase ten bags, according to Kimball. And you can only use their bags for the service.
Right. Right. So I'm trying to get an idea of what we're going to look like, because we already know that the price is going to go up. Camera's not on you.
I can turn the camera on. Please don't.
Um, I think, I think that's going to be important information to have moving forward, because we know that the price is going to go up from where we're at right now, which I had mentioned in the last meeting to you both also. That's where COVID served us well, is that it was a five-year contract. So while everybody else's rates have gone up, we've stayed the same, and we've had no interruption with the recycling. Um, I, I would, so while I'm not sure of the wording on that, I think that that would be important to have that in there. Um, I also, some possible questions I thought about having in here is, what are the needs of the residents? And that is, how often have you needed to have large pickups? Is that something that should be a factor for us when choosing a company? What their rates are when someone's picking up a, you know, they're picking up a hot water tank or a mattress. What are the needs? And should that be a factor for us?
Also, if, if we could, when we're, when we're setting, this is just a future thing, but one of the things that I was reading up on is that certain companies will charge you extra. And it's a significant amount for, like, let's say you want to throw out a, a couch. They will charge you extra. First, you have to wrap it in plastic. And that's, that's just a future thing to think about for when we do the contract.
That is in the contract. You're, there is a bulk list, a pricing for bulk items, and they are supposed to be wrapped in plastic. If there's certain things, that's in our contract, but I don't think Kimball's doing that.
I, exactly, but there are other ones.
In the contract.
There are other ones, when I was looking into the ones that are out there, that they state that on their website that they, they charge such a, such a, no matter if you're a regular. that they state that on their website that they, they charge such a, such a, no matter if you're a regular customer, resident or whatever. They will charge you and they want it to be specific, like you have to wrap it in plastic. I think that came after COVID hit because they don't want any germs getting on anybody. So that's just FYI.
Um, and then also I had mentioned this in the past also is, um, do the residents, um, a question that should be in here is, are we happy with five-year contract or would you like to see a three-year contract? So length of contract question. Do you have anything?
I don't know that they should all be yes or no questions. I mean, there should be some a block where in there provides some, any additional input, some to that effect.
How do you measure that?
I don't know that you measure it, but I'm, we're looking for ideas.
It's the, that's the problem. We did the comprehensive plan audit and we were selecting our steering committee. We had opportunity for people to write things. They weren't yeses or nos and it was something that came back at us. People didn't understand why the selection was the way it was. Um, and there were some really valuable and poignant components to, to the written. Um, I, and I think there would be, but how do you quantify it?
Um, one, I, I agree with not having all yes or no. Um, and that was one thing, do we want to have like a range, like check the box for like the, your, um, price cannot exceed, you know, would you support remaining with a single hauler? If, um, the rates go up to $95 a quarter? Would you support remaining single hauler if the rates go up to $110 a quarter? And then would you support single hauler if the rates go up to $120 a quarter? You know, I thought about, um, for that, having three different options that people can choose.
I think the rates will change based on the opt-out. Right? We have a 15% opt-out versus a 5% opt-out that will change the rates collectively.
Well, that's why I am asking right now when I'm reaching out to, um, trash companies is what would a ballpark price be for a 15% opt-out?
And what are they saying?
I, they haven't responded to me.
Because we were, according to the board that signed this contract, fortunate to even get a 5% opt-out. This is not a regular occurrence in any single hauler contract. And they allowed for it because it was the first time that our township was using it and they knew people were not going to be happy moving forward with single hauler. It is not a traditional part of most garbage or single hauler contracts. And so the ideology of increasing it certainly would fit our township, but it would raise prices for everyone else. And will they even do it? So it's a balance.
Right. That's why I'm asking the questions right now to put it in the survey is would you support remaining single hauler? If the rates go up because the rates will go up if there's a higher opt-out. So the people that are happy with single hauler right now, would you still be happy if your rates go up? Because we know they're going to go up regardless. Those rates are going to go up because it's going to be five years later. But the rates are also probably going to go up because we're going to have a higher number. We already know we're going to need a higher number of opt-outs than we currently have. So the people who are happy with it, will you still be happy with it? When you're paying more because we are not going to make the people who don't need the service pay for the service so that you have a savings? That is the entire purpose of having that question.
Well, and like I said, you may not get an opt-out. That was something that Kimball afforded us that is not traditional in contracts.
I'm pretty darn certain that we would be able to get an opt-out with any company because it's guaranteed business.
If we talk to Joe.
Oh, I have spoken to Joe and I don't, I've argued this with Joe many times.
Joe's number one issue with the Hinckley contract is that there's an opt-out. There's not an opt-out in any other contract he has.
Mm-hmm. There's not another opt-out in any other contract he has and they still get 95% of the total business.
There's one, if I, if I, don't quote me on this, but I believe there's one other township that has an opt-out and it's a 7% opt-out. And I believe it's Lafayette Township, but don't quote me on that. I don't know for sure. I just remember us.
May have changed since I was.
Yeah, it's, it was, yeah, but yeah, that's one of his complaints that he doesn't want to have an opt-out.
And I would, it doesn't benefit them to have an opt-out.
No, it doesn't.
So I think that we run the risk at the renewal of not getting any opt-out at all, no matter which company we use. That's just.
Well, that's going to be part of the bid. So if we don't get any bids, then I guess we can't remain single hauler. But that would be part of the bidding process is to put this out to bid with, and I'm just spitballing numbers, but like a 15% opt-out. If nobody bids on it.
Well, I think we all have to agree to that, right? Before we put out the bid.
Well, this is
Right, but this is just a question.
Right.
This is, yeah, we're going to have to agree to what's going to go into the bid, but that's going to be next summer.
I think the question should be very simple. It should be, are you in favor of moving forward with a single hauler? That's my two cents. I think that it's keep it cut and dry.
Well, we don't want to miss an opportunity here if we're sending this out to collect some information on what we can incorporate into a new bid.
I think you're going to get more responses when you're putting dollar amounts in there versus the yes or no. Because I do agree that there will be a certain amount of survey bias. People who are happy with what they have right now tend to just go with the flow until they're no longer happy. So a lot of people may not respond to the survey. Whereas when you're putting out a survey saying, hey, if we remain with this, what dollar amount are you comfortable with? Me personally, that would get me to respond to something saying, oh, that would be, you know, instead of paying $75 a quarter, I might have to pay $115 a quarter. I'm not okay with that. I'll, I'm better off shopping, shopping, you know, shopping around and getting my own rate. So I think to me, seeing dollar amounts would make me respond to that survey.
Well, we could reduce survey bias by just saying no responses, a no, or no responses, a yes, like we did with the water survey letter.
We could do that.
Trustee Asher?
Yes.
Um, there was a email that I sent you. I don't know if you remember, but it was, it was like a breakdown of what I thought would be good questions. Do you remember that? You'd asked me to get that for you and I don't have it with me here. I'm sorry. But there were
Did you send that to me?
Uh, it was like a month and a half ago. A month ago, maybe?
We'll have reduced rates if it's a five-year contract versus a three-year. I think another question that would be good if we're going to ask a million questions is how many people are recycling? I love the opportunity to recycle, but not everybody utilizes it.
Um, that was one of the questions that I asked when I'm looking for ballpark numbers is um, unlimited pickup and recycling. I do not know this, but from what I have seen with other trash providers like Rumpke, I know it's very similar to Kimball's setup where there's the trash. And then there's the recycling bin also. I think probably a lot more are going to that with recycling being such a focus these days. But I, I would say, should we wait and see what information comes back to us from these trash providers that if recycling is kind of included with it like Kimball? Would that be a necessary question to have in there? I did find yours, Lynn. It was the four, the four questions, right?
Yeah, because you guys wanted to keep it under five, right?
Yes, I would like to remain with the single hauler. Yes, I would like to remain with the single hauler, but would like to have more than the choice to either do cart service or bag service. Yes, I would like to remain with the single hauler, but I would like to have it be someone other than who the contract is with currently. And no, I would like to end the single hauler and choose my own.
What's the other choice between bag?
That's it. You either have with
That's what I'm saying. What would, what was?
Yeah.
Well, I was just thinking, because a lot of, a lot of residents that I've talked to when they call in, they don't like being forced to choose between the cart service, which is expensive. But it's not as expensive as some other ones I know, but, or the bag service because you're forced to purchase the bags.
It's what you, that's what I'm saying. What is the other option?
So if they would offer, if they could offer something where we wouldn't have to purchase the bags, it's just a, just a thought. It's just an idea where we wouldn't have to like, you know, yeah, pick me up, but charge me like, um, instead of
So they don't, see they, they, they don't understand that's their tracking mechanism for how many, how much trash is being collected by utilizing that bag. Otherwise you can put 16 bags out there of your own. And they're, they're picking it all up. They're, the driver isn't counting how many bags he picks up. He's making sure he's picking up Kimball bags.
Hmm.
When they collect.
I didn't know that. I didn't. I just was relaying the, the resident.
Yeah.
You know, hey.
No, because it, it looks like these bags are so expensive. Well, that's how they're tracking your collection.
Okay.
Hmm, but they are picking up other things. If you have a regular bag out there with Kimball bags, they'll still pick it up, right? I mean, they'll, they'll pick up a three by five area or whatever.
If you have full service with the carts, they pick up additional bags.
And not with bags.
But now with bag service, they just pick up bags that say Kimball on them. To my knowledge, I mean, I could be wrong, but.
No, it's, it's just the bags.
Yeah, I think that that's what the contract says, but they do otherwise. Just like the bulk, they're not charging for a lot of the bulk items, but they're picking them up.
I can recall at least one instance where they did not pick up the bulk items. We actually had to contact
Joe.
Jackie. But yeah.
Cause I know Joe came out and picked up a hot water tank by himself.
That's cool. Um, no, we had to send them back. They, they did not pick it up for like three weeks, four weeks, I believe. This is when I first started, so I, not exact on the, the timeframe, but we had to, after several contacts and several calls, they eventually did pick it up, but it took, I mean, and the, the resident already called them several times and then called me in the office and said, this has been like three, four weeks. Like I said, I'm not, I don't know about the timeframe, but they, they haven't picked up. But then we, through our due diligence, as you guys like to say, we got them to pick it up, but it was just, they don't always pick it up. So
even after you call, so. They don't always pick up the trash.
That's true. They must be a couple of times.
So I think the major thing, like you said, is including prices because it, that I think is the sticking point for you, that's a sticking point and, uh, a lot of the folks don't like dragging that can out if they've got a stone driveway or whatever. So I think those are the two issues that you need to, and how do you, how do you fix to drag in the cans out?
I don't know because a lot of them have those big cards now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know how we can mention prices. I mean, we can put these, these ideas out there, but we really don't have a true indication of what price would be until the bid goes out.
Um, where I was thinking with the prices is, um, I want to know what is too much for the residents. So that when we put these out to bid, if they come back really high, we don't have to take any bid. So that if we put them out and, you know, three different companies come back and say, sure, we'll do, we'll do Hinckley Township trash pickup for $120 a quarter for the unlimited service. And residents may, that may be the overwhelming response is saying, nope, that's my cutoff. I'm not going above 110. That makes the decision for us.
The tough part there is, is we don't know what other providers are charging now because I was paying more than that when Kimball came in.
You're paying more than 120 a quarter?
Yeah, there were a lot of residents that were paying more.
You didn't have Kimball. I had Kimball to begin with.
I've never had trash pickup. Well, although now I get to pay for it because I'm not taking one of the opt-out spots, but, um, I would very much like to go back to that and not have to pay for it.
I just think we run the risk of saying, okay, well, if $120 is the threshold, but you want a three-year contract, if we go to a five-year, it'll go lower. Like, uh, there's too many questions that we need to navigate in our bid. Um, and in our negotiations that, uh, that there's too many, there's too many variables. The opt-out is a variable to rates. And the term is of the contract is a variable to rates. Those are two big variables that are going to change what our monthly rate is going to be, or quarterly rate is going to be for our residents. So I think it's, you know, I, I completely understand where you're getting, where you're going with price. And obviously if that's, we want to be consistent and, and conscientious with the, the dollars that our households are spending. Um, but we just have to be careful because those rates will all be variable, like I said, based on the opt-out and the term.
I just, I look at this survey as giving us the information we need to make an informed decision. You're not going to make everybody happy. But we're going to give ourselves a better idea of what it is that the majority is is looking for because you can send a survey out for every single decision we want to make, but that, at the end of the day, that's not why any of us were elected to this position to ask the residents how we should vote on something. They, they voted for us because they trusted how, how we think and how we're going to vote with things. So I think that the purpose of this survey is sending it out and getting that general consensus that I think people feel did not happen the first time this contract was signed three and a half years ago. So it's going to give us more information. Knowledge is power.
Yeah, it wasn't three and a half. It was back in 2019.
So it was five and a half years or four and a half years ago.
Sorry, the contract started three and a half years.
Yes, it did.
Yes, the contract started three and a half years ago, but this started 2019.
Well, like I said, I, I agree with the survey. I think it's a great way to capture what the majority would like to see. I, I'm always a proponent for a survey because when I sit here, I represent those people. And anytime I can quantify or have conversation or get garner any type of information, I'm all for it.
So the first question obviously is, would you like to continue with single hauler service?
Yep. I agree with that.
And, and the second would be if we have single hauler service, would you intend to opt out?
Personally, I, I gave that, I gave that a lot of thought. And I actually think, um, would you like to remain single hauler? I think that should be the last question because we want them to answer all of these other questions prior to it, like the dollar amount, you know? Because a lot of people might just say, nope.
Well, if, if we're going to say, if you don't respond to the surveys, the assumption is that you're happy with it. So if you fill out that first question, then say, if you're happy with it, you don't have to go any further. Then that's where I'm at.
Is that what we're going to say? That they're happy with it or are there, no? If they don't fill it out?
No, the people who don't want it are going to fill it out.
Okay. So we're going to assume that, that, that a no response is a yes to a single hauler. Are we putting that in this at the bottom in fine print? Definitely need to put that in there.
Well, if we do that, I would not put it in fine print. I would put it bold. I would put it bold so they can't miss it.
I would make it colored, but you know, I, I just think it should be in there.
I mean, I, I, I understand where you're going with that, Melissa, but I also agree. I mean, I, I, I understand where you're going with that, Melissa, but I also agree with Jack's point. If they are not happy with it, they are going to let us know.
You usually hear from the ones that are not happy versus the ones that are happy.
An unhappy customer will tell seven people about their experience, while a happy customer may tell one.
I, I am in complete agreement. I'm just asking if a no response is a no that they're not happy, or a no response is a yes that they are happy. We just need to designate it, so we can put it in the.
A, a no response to the survey would be yes, I am happy or I'm a single hauler.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a percentage of responses that you're?
A hundred percent.
Well, I mean, if you get a, a twenty percent response, is that viable response?
Yep.
That means eighty percent we're happy.
Yep, because a no response is a, we're pleased and we don't even need to fill this out or return it back.
Are we going to accept these via email and mail, or just one or the other?
I think it should be both. Because I think that some people might just, which we've had in the past, they take a picture of it with their phone and email it to you.
Yep.
And that's kind of simpler, isn't it?
Are we going to have a date timeframe that these are going to have to be returned by?
Yes, but I don't think.
Twenty twenty-four.
I don't think we're there yet, right? Because we're gonna have to type this up and we can determine that.
Okay, I just, just.
No, good question.
I just would say that it would be the same as the opt-out. That way they can send it in with the opt-out if they do it that way, or, you know, electronically.
By the, by the opt-out timeframe, which is going to be November first to third.
Yeah.
Is that gonna be, um, are you gonna be inundated then, if, um, the?
I will just put it off to the side and handle it after I get through the opt-out.
I would say November third, because you're gonna be done with the opt-out by the second.
Well, I'm gonna be done with the processing of them, because they come in and they fly.
I know, I know. You're done by the first day.
Well, I would say that.
That way it's a Friday, it's clear designation, we can tackle it the next week.
Combining it is a great idea. The only thing I see is opt-out is definitely email only.
Oh, yeah.
The survey is your choice, email or mail.
Just the way it's gonna be. There are gonna be people that drop them off, there are gonna be people that mail them, there are gonna be people that.
I just hope people don't get confused and say, oh, here's my.
That's true.
And here's my.
Well, it says electronically all over that opt-out, and we've been doing it that way since COVID, since twenty twenty, so I would say most of the people who are opting out are the same people and know that process.
I actually would say if we're sending this out at the end of August, beginning of September, I would say, because what do we know about surveys? If you give them too much time, they forget about it. I would actually say, have these surveys sent back to us before the opt-out, and you can still put them aside. We don't need to look at them right now. Put them aside, so that gives them, you know, two or three weeks tops to complete the survey. Because the opt-out is such a specific timeframe that they can send it, I would say send the survey back.
Okay, just to clarify, it goes out September, by the fifteenth usually.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Okay, thank you.
Or not the survey, the.
Opt-out.
Sorry.
So are you gonna be collating all of the responses and, okay?
Do you want me to?
And, and I don't.
Or do you want to hire somebody else?
I don't think a name should be attributed to the survey either. I think that was one of the things that we talked about at length with the comprehensive man audit. We had the highest response ever in Hinkley at forty percent. Because people don't like to designate their name with their.
Well, no, I, I agree with that. But do we want to number it? Like we did with whatever's the, the, I think it was.
Yeah, that's why I'm bringing it up.
Do we want to number it? Do we want to go by? I, I don't know.
That was, that was kind of a lot of work and expense to do that, wasn't it?
It was. It was a lot of work. I don't know how much it added to the expense, because I don't remember.
It was just one little number in the, the corner. Yep.
That way you know.
If you get two number twos.
One, one.
Per household.
Yeah, one per house. Do we want to do one per household?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Otherwise, you're gonna get one person who's unhappy, to your point, who copies it and sends it to seven other friends. Or just does it themselves.
So why can't you just have them put an address on there and then just not utilize that? In their response?
And then just mark that address if you get more.
Redact that.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think you can, I mean, you could redact it in your spreadsheet, but you're not gonna be able to redact it if there's a request.
Well, that's a good point. Well, we could, it wasn't that hard for, um, the printing company to do that. I mean.
The numbering system is difficult to track.
Yeah, numbering system. I think that, that numbering, it wouldn't be that hard for, for, it, it wouldn't be an additional cost of significance, I don't think. I don't, I don't, I don't remember. I have to look it up.
Okay.
To see how much it was.
Just get your crayons out. Two.
I don't think it was very expensive. I don't even know there was a cost attributed to it.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I'm fine with that. Yes.
The letter.
Do you think, did you think we're gonna high tail it out of here without? I've got it right up here on front. We had agreed at the last meeting to send the annual letter to the prosecutor, but these are.
These are.
Response letters.
So these are the response letters. I put them all on your things, and it basically, there, there's just date changes on most of it, but then. And then I added, which begins February of twenty twenty-four. Um, should you receive Kimball carts in error on the first one, um, February twenty twenty-four, please contact Kimball Service Department. The thing that I changed, or that I'm thinking about changing and wanted your guys' input, um, is you will have the opportunity to submit an affidavit application again next year, since this is the last year for this contract coming up in twenty twenty-four, so February twenty twenty-four starts the last of the five-year contract with Kimball.
Right.
I wanted to see if, if you guys would be okay with removing that paragraph that says you will have the opportunity to submit an affidavit application, blah, 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 blah. Each consecutive year affidavits will be made available, September, October. I wanted to see if you guys would be okay with removing that. I know we can't make a decision, but I wanted to toss it out to you.
I, I would, my opinion would be leave it, because we don't know what's happening with the next contract, if there will be another contract. And I would assume that there would need to be an opt-out with the next contract as well.
I would remove it.
Right, but the only thing is, is that if this is the last year that, for this particular contract.
We can't assume.
We can't, we, we don't want to leave that in there. Excuse me.
I agree with you, Lynn. I think it's a good, good point.
Yeah. Because we can put that in the next one that we do, that this is the last year of this one, and I don't want them to say, oh, I can just, I can do it, you know, it. I'm basically preempting what the prosecutor might come back with. He's gonna say, well, this is the last year of the contract. Why do you have this statement in here? It's not a valid.
You've been working for Hinkley Township for a little bit. You got it, you got it down now. That's exactly what they're.
I don't know about that, but I just thought it would be, what do you think, Jack? Or trustee Sweattick?
I agree. My, my name is Jack. I agree.
And that's the only thing that is, besides dates, that I removed, except for that one sentence on the second paragraph, it says, which begins in February of twenty twenty-four. Because, and then I added February twenty twenty-four, because the last couple of years, they've not put the carts out or dropped the carts off until January, February, sometimes even March, when they get, because this year they were, they were behind. So that's why I added February to that second paragraph there, on that first letter. Are you guys okay with that for right now, until you guys can make a formal decision at the next meeting, next week?
We can make a decision, we can't vote on anything.
Yeah, we, we can, because we're in a public meeting, we can make a decision, but we can't vote, yes, we can't make any motions or resolutions.
Okay. Well, let me know what you think.
I'd say do it.
Agreed. Jack says do it, Melissa says do it, so.
Okay, we're removing it then.
There you go. Thank you for printing these up. It's, it's fine. Yeah, it's, I, I lost my voice. Um, thank you for printing these up and working on these, Lynn.
Okay, so all of this, I'm gonna then forward to the prosecutor's office and get their input on it, and then we'll take it from there. I'll do that, this, the by the end of today.
Very good. Are you good?
That's what I have. Do you, I'm sorry, do you want to start working on taping this up, or do you want me to? And it can be presented, um, kind of the rough draft of the survey at the next meeting. I saw you making notes, but I also took notes.
Just, just, it's up to you. You tell me what to do. I'm good with either one. I started, well, I have to take notes, because it's a work session. So.
Do you have time to do it?
Are you the recording secretary? Because it's a work session.
Do you have time to do it? If not, I'll work on something this weekend.
Well, I can do it. I mean, you just.
If you, if you have the opportunity to do it, if you send it to me, you and I can work on it, and then I'll present it at the next meeting on Tuesday.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you, Lynn.
Um, can I mention one other thing?
Nope, we're done. We're all out of time.
We were, uh, we are down to fifteen delinquencies. Um, so if everybody pays the current bill that's due like now, we should only have fifteen properties assessed, if they don't pay their bill by then.
That's awesome.
And Dawn and I have been working on this. I mean, we only had like, it was under thirty. So it wasn't as big as it has been in the previous years, and between her and I, we knocked it down, so.
Had over fifty before.
Yes, so if, if everybody pays their bill, we're, we are good to go, and it won't be as much work for us.
Good news.
Or them.
Well, and I don't like to assess anybody.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
We are contract, contractually obligated.
Yes, and one of the things also that we keep hearing from Joe, is that he's never seen a contract like this.
Nope.
In all of this.
Yep.
Nobody else has contracts like this. We're, we're doing a lot of the work.
That is all going to be part of the bed. That, we don't have to have that as part of our survey, so, because the, the residents don't know about that.
Yeah.
Yes, I agree.
Well, I think that we should remove the assessment. Well. I don't think we should be a co-collection agency for Kimball.
Well, I, I would agree with that, but the, I, when we were living, and this is just an aside, when we were living in Arizona, anything that didn't get paid, they taxed it under our taxes, and they just, they just did that. That's the way Arizona works, because there's so much, so many people that live there that, you know, that they're there for a time being. It's, it's very transient state, so. That's all.
Yep, that's all gonna be part of the bid.
Two quick things. One is I am gonna try and do something with the old fire station wall, again, at least get it insulated before the weather comes. The other is, if you have anything for the department heads that I liaise on, police and service, that you want them to be at a meeting for, let me know. If they don't have anything, I'm not gonna require them to attend. There's no reason to take time out of their day, so. If there's nothing on their schedule and you have nothing for them, uh, I'm going to excuse them.
That's how we've done it in the past, Jack. I completely agree with that.
I had one more thing. Uh, remember we talked at the last meeting about the shred day?
What?
The shred day?
Yes.
Electronic shred?
The electronic shed, shred, shed, shred. Um, so I made some progress on that, and Melissa, I found a paper shredding company also, veteran-owned, that is, they're actually live in Hinkley. And I also reached out to, it is, and I also reached out to the superintendent, Kathy Ockerman, who has given us, um, they're happy to partner with the township with this, so we can do, um, we can use the school, and it would be free of service. They generally do charge a fee, but both of these companies said that they would be very happy to donate to the township. Um, they only asked that we do promote them, uh, like on our website, um, promote both of the companies, because they would be offering this service free of charge. Um, the one company is called, oh, no, that's trash, not shredding. The one company is.
We're not promoting them, we're promoting the shred day.
But well, it's the shred day, but.
Done by them.
Being done by them. Um, so the one who emailed all of us then from, that's the Akron Company. Summit Recycling is the Akron Company. That's the one who does the, um, electronic shredding. Um, that they said, you know, they asked that the event is promoted, um, through social media, um, on the websites. And then same thing with the Black Ops Destruction. Now, Black Ops Destruction had mentioned, what if you turn this into a fundraiser, so that people can come, they can, um, they can donate if they want to. You know, they come and they're shredding, and they want to donate like ten dollars or twenty dollars, because it's something that generally costs people, you know, a decent amount of money to have shredding services, and donate that to, like, the school, the PTO. Um, I reached out to Kathy about that, and she said, you know what, for this time, let's just, um, say it's just a partnership for an event for the community, um, and not do a donation, but since that had been suggested, I thought I would bring it up to both of you and see, is there something that, um, the township might want to raise funds for? Or do you want to just say, this is a free event for the community?
That would be my first thought.
Yeah, I would say free event.
I, I think when, when you start asking for stuff like that, it minimizes the participation.
Okay, we did do it. This was exactly what I created, um, as a PTO person back at Hinkley Elementary. We did a shred day. And, um, people could bring in unlimited amount of paper for shredding, and they were able to make a donation to the PTO. Um, so I, I fully support it, but I, I think that it should be a community event that doesn't cost anything. And I know that Sharon Township does it. A lot of the FOP posts and veteran posts do it. Um, so I would just, I would like to see it at no charge.
Okay, um, and the two weekends that look like they jive for everybody's schedule right now would be either Saturday, September thirtieth or October seventh. I just need to make sure that all three, um, that that's still good with the school, and the other two companies um, can make that work. Any objection to either of those days?
Ma'am?
I have a question.
Please.
When you, when you're saying promote the event on the website, do we just want to promote, like, we're not gonna, like, promote?
Like a news notice.
Just, I, I would think a news notice with maybe a link to each company, so that if people want to get additional information, it'll be at this day, at this location, um.
Cause they'll have questions about what can I bring, so they'll be able to see it.
Okay, all right. The only, the only thing I'm bringing up is when we did the website, there was talk about slippery slopes. Um, I remember Martha saying, you can't put any kind of, you know, other companies' links on there or anything like that, so I just wanted to bring that up.
That's a good point.
I think it's a very good point. I think, um, my thinking is, this is something that they generally charge two thousand dollars a, an event for. So they are donating both of these companies. Um, it's something that they generally, um, charge.
I think you can, we can point them in that direction, not necessarily put a link on.
Okay, because I, yeah, because I remember us talking when we did the
Right.
website thing, and I don't want to, you know, cross any lines or.
I think that in order for this to be a Hinkley Township community event, we should require some type of certification, whether it be a P, a Kimball uh, bill or an electric bill, something showing residency in Hinkley.
Well, I don't know that we can necessarily do that, especially if we're partnering with the. Well, I don't know that we can necessarily do that, especially if we're partnering with the school. I mean, it could be, it's Highland Schools, so someone from Granger could come, especially if the school's gonna be, um, promoting this as well. But it could be Granger, it could be Sharon coming.
That's one of the things that the other communities do do, because you're gonna get excessive amounts of traffic. And if it's a community event, I would start it that way and see how it goes. You don't want traffic out on Bridge Road, which when we held it here at the old Hinkley Elementary, when I ran it for PTO, we had traffic on three oh three.
Where is it gonna be? Is it gonna be at the high school or the?
Yeah, elementary school.
Elementary school. Oh, so now that way.
And if we just do it for residents, then we can post, post it on the website without any issue.
Yes, ma'am.
So we just had a gentleman in from one of the Cub Scouts, uh, fill out some paperwork for a township rental agreement. They are going to be having, obviously, we know the community garage sales coming up. He's asked if we could post that community day as a news and events on our website, just to help minimize calls coming into our office, asking for information, as well as just getting that information out. They're also having a.
Flag burning.
Flag retirement cer- ceremony, um, in October. And they would like to get the word out to our community as well. So are those some additional things that we can add to our website?
As a news and event?
This is the slippery slope.
Yeah, cuz once you start doing it, you're gonna, well, that's what Martha said. She said, once you start, you're just gonna keep on doing it. Um.
And that's October seventh, is that correct? Cuz cuz that might be.
What if we push that stuff over to the chamber?
Okay.
I was saying, what if we push that stuff over to the chamber and have them do it?
I think the chamber generally tries to only, um, promote, um, businesses for people who are members, from my understanding.
I thought again, they do Buzzard Day. They run Buzzard Day, they run the trick or treating, they do the Christmas thing down here. It's not just business.
Let's see about.
I know, I'm saying, I I know all the good things the chamber does. I'm saying what they generally promote, I, as it's always been explained to me, is they promote people who are members, the businesses who are members. These two businesses, I don't know if they are members or not. You would probably know that better than I would, as you're a member of the chamber. Would they promote businesses on the social media and on their webpage that are not members of the chamber?
See, the difference here is that we're partnering with them.
But maybe we shouldn't be, if it's this much of an issue. Maybe the school should just do it since it's gonna be held at the school.
And we have been asked in the past, as far as the signs go, to put stuff on the signboard.
We say no.
Not always.
No, we don't. I, there's a lot of stuff that goes on those marquees.
There's a, there's.
Well, they have to come in and fill out the form.
Right, they have to do the form request and all that, but. So that's another option, instead of putting it on the website, to put it on the marquee if they should decide to do so, but they would have to come in and request.
We don't wanna advertise the movie night as well.
Well, and how do we promote these two businesses that are doing the shredding when we wouldn't support the chamber in promoting their signs in town center for Christmas?
Well, we supported the chamber as we do every year and put Buzzard Day on the website.
Well, they came out and filled out the, not, it wasn't on the website, it was on the sign though.
Buzzard Days.
It goes on the sign. No, it's never on the website. They have their own website.
Calendar.
It's on the calendar.
Because it's.
It's a community event.
Are we putting the event? Are we putting Buzzard Day?
Community event.
Buzzard Day is different than the, I I thought it was the pancake breakfast.
I don't remember what we did on the website. I'd have to look in in my archives.
You know what, I, this board wouldn't support that that chamber thing at Christmas time, having signs here in town center on township property, so maybe we shouldn't promote this.
Or maybe we should, because.
Well, that was a fundraiser. Um, this is just a free event that we are offering to our residents. Um, from, you know, this was discussed at the last meeting and you're the one who said you would also like to see a paper shredding event, so.
I love a paper shredding event. There aren't enough of them. Like I said, we ran our paper shredding and recycling and actually a whole like drop off of clothes and and home goods through the PTO.
I will email them and ask them, um, if they're okay, um, not having their emails or, I'm sorry, their websites um, on the website, just the event on the website and then it can be promoted, um, via social media.
If it's just an event, is it a Hinkley Township event? Are we endorsing it as a township? And if so, would we then have some type of regulation that you have to be a Hinkley citizen to be partake?
In my eyes, we, this is a Hinkley Township event that we've, again, are utilizing their services to make happen. And what was the other question?
I think she said bringing like proof of residency.
And that would be, I think that would be a question for the the people who are doing the shredding. Do they have the capacity if there are additional people that come in?
I, they said, um, when I spoke to them, they said, you just never know. Sometimes it is an event where you are hustling the entire time.
Yep.
Other times, there's days where you're sitting around twiddling your thumbs. You never know what you're gonna get.
Now, the Brunswick, you used to have that event where the day would hold up by the service garage up off of one thirty there. And I, I mean, they would collect hazardous waste, you know, paint, leftover paint oils and stuff. And I would go up there all the time and they never asked for any kinda ID or anything.
Well, it's different for different, like I know Sharon Township, you have to have a form of proof of residency. And I I appreciate the sponsorship of both. I just worry about the optics of a resident being a part of this and making money off of it. It's just a thought I just had.
Who's making money off?
Well, your brother's company is gonna be a part of it, right?
Well, Black Ops Destruction is the name of the business that is a resident and veteran owned and they are not making any money off of it. They generally charge two thousand dollars is what I said. They will be donating the service. That is exactly what I said. Nobody is making any money.
They don't make any money off of the the paper shredding when it's handled?
I do not know.
When I used to do it with Hinkley Elementary, it was only a hundred fifty dollars. Because they were making money off of the shredding once it's broken down or whatever they do to it.
Well, it's probably been many years since you did it with Hinkley Elementary and I'm sure the cost of services have increased as everything has.
I'm happy to have anybody donate service money to the township. If it doesn't cost us money, I appreciate it.
Right. Which was also why the resident who was going to volunteer his services had suggested, why don't you do a fundraiser? So you can raise money for the schools or some kind of, uh, nonprofit for the township.
We're not in the business of making money.
That's why we wouldn't be making money. It would be a donation.
Okay, anything else? Anybody from the public? Anything? With nothing else for the good of the order, I will move to adjourn at ten thirty nine AM.
Okay.
Second by Augustine All in favor?
Aye.